All right, I've got the five o'clock. I call the meeting to order today, Monday, November eighth, twenty twenty one. Uh, roll call, we have selectmen Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, uh, Mackenzie Jewitt, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, town clerk Katie Dandiran, and town manager Jesse Dunbar. Um, adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? All right, uh, approval of minutes, we have the minutes from October eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October eighteenth.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from Monday, October eighteen, twenty twenty one, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay.
I'll also.
Yep. All right, approval of warrants. We have warrant forty-three for six thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, forty-four for nine thousand four hundred eighty dollars and sixty-five cents, forty-five for six hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-six cents, forty-six for nine thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents, uh, forty-seven for ninety-seven thousand four hundred and five dollars and ninety-six cents, and forty-eight for thirty-four thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-three cents.
Make a motion to approve warrants forty-three through forty-eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants forty-three through forty-eight, is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have committee appointments, we have the comprehensive plan task force. Uh, we have three seats with terms expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, but we have two for persons at large and one for a select board seat, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we have, I was gonna say, we have four applicants for the peoples at large, uh, we have Esther Jacobs, Vanessa Malay, um, Michael Hayes, and Jane Ashworth. And is any one of them here today that would like to speak? Yes?
I don't want to speak.
Oh, okay. So your name is, sorry.
Jane Ashworth.
Okay.
Well, I think since you showed up, I nominate you for, uh, Jane Ashworth for a position on the comprehensive plan task force.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to, um, sorry, to appoint Jane Ashworth to a seat on the comprehensive plan task force, um, expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Esther Jacobs on the comprehensive plan task force.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Esther Jacobs to a seat on the comprehensive plan task force, uh, seat expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion?
Um, Esther just got put on the library trustees, didn't she?
Yes, she did, yep, correct.
I believe that's me. I'd kinda like to see someone else on some of these, to be honest with you. Um, I'm not sure who Vanessa Malay is, but she sounded pretty qualified too. I'd like to get as many people on the boards as we could.
Well, Esther's a lifetime resident of Tremont, so I think it'd be good to have a Tremont resident to sleep here all of life.
Yep. Yeah, well, she's already on that board, but I mean, like I said, I'd rather see it spread out a little bit.
You're on the select board and that, right? So that's two different boards, so.
Well, I'm representing the select board on there.
Right, but I'm just saying that's two people, a person could be on two different boards.
Oh, I understand that.
I'll ask her for the position.
I'll ask her too.
Okay, I just thought I'd toss that out.
All right, uh, call for a vote, all those in favor? All right. And now we have to have someone for the select board seat.
Has to be a select board member or can we change it to an at-large member?
Was that voluntary?
I think it was.
What? That was a question.
Okay, that's what I was.
I know what's coming.
If, if there are no, if none of you.
Ooh, but there are.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mackenzie Jewitt to the seat on the comprehensive plan task force expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I blame Howdy.
Then moved and seconded to appoint Mackenzie Jewitt to a seat on the comprehensive plan task force expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion?
Yes, no. What's the commitment? Like, what's the?
It's the third Thursday of the month.
Five thirty, usually.
Once a month. Once a month.
Yep.
Once a month, you said, you said.
So far it has been once a month.
Okay, I'll give it a whirl.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, we have that Zoom later.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Okay, does that take care of all of the comprehensive?
Um, the other thing that's come up, I know, um, the rec board position.
Mm-hmm.
It's not on the comprehensive task force.
Yes. Yes.
And since we don't have a rec board, I know there was discussion about making that an at-large seat.
Yes, um.
Which, I know Jessica Bass has been filling the seat, she's been secretary at the meetings.
Yep, um, she has emailed that she does not, she's not interested in serving at-large.
Okay.
She would like to represent the school board, but we currently have a school board representative. That person may not be in agreement with that change, but I have not received anything from that member.
Okay. Okay.
So if I do, I'll put it on an upcoming agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Jesse.
Sounds good. All right, regular business, we have the community building policy. I'll let you kinda give us a summary of that, Jesse, I know we've gone over this.
Yep.
In the past, but, um, is there anything, anything different besides just putting it all in writing?
No, so essentially, um, at July's meeting, the rec board was dissolved and the current community building policy, um, leaves the rec board in charge of the community building. So essentially, we can't make any decisions on it right now, it's just the rec board doesn't exist.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I've changed all of places in the document where it says rec board to select board. Um, and at your September seventh meeting, uh, you made the motion to remove the key system from Gottes and have it here at the town office.
Mm-hmm.
So anywhere in there that it referenced Gottes store, I've replaced with town office. Um, I believe that was, oh, the exception for Harbor House, I believe that was also your September seventh meeting, um, Ingrid, um, Cashmar was here. And discussed the issue with the way the policy was currently written, didn't allow Harbor House to use the building because they're not a Tremont resident, any of their key holders. Um, and it seemed at the meeting that you're, you were in favor of allowing Harbor House to use it for the youth, um, Tremont youth when the need arises, so I put that exception in to the ID card section.
Okay, so the, the community building, nothing has changed, um, due to the rec board as far as using it.
That's true.
It's the, people would just come to the town office, um, and then you would just check with Jandrea like we talked about before?
Yep. Yep, yes.
Just because of the COVID, so, you know?
Yep, it would be checked with Jandrea and anything, any use that would have, um, gone to the record for approval will come to you for approval.
Yeah.
Um, if it's, you know, some usual request or something.
Yeah, but if someone just wants to use it for normal purposes, then they just come in and check with the, check with someone in the office and, yeah.
Right, and see the current status of the building.
Yep, okay.
And you guys will issue ID cards, like if somebody new comes in and wants an ID card, you get it at the town office?
Yeah, which we did anyways when it was.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, do we plan on switching it back to Gottes eventually and, or just see how this goes, or?
Um, that's up to you guys if you wanna change it, um, in the future, um.
I think the original reason for that was just so people could get it in the evenings and weekends and stuff, right?
Do it on the. Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I know, hopefully, once this, once COVID hopefully goes away eventually someday, then it can be back to just grabbing it whenever you wanna and go use it, but it's,
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know when that will be, though by now, but clearly not.
I'll make a motion to approve the community building policy and rules for use, uh, version eleven four twenty twenty-one.
So it's.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the community building policy and rules for use, version eleven four twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next, we have Dix Point Road reconstruction, um, when there, you guys weren't here on the last one and there was no hurry for it, so we figured we'd put it off onto this meeting and, and, uh, go over what we had budgeted for it, um. The one eighty-four was what we have budgeted currently, right, Jesse?
Um, the one eighty-four is what's in the reserve.
In the, yes, yep.
Yes, and you had budgeted, um, a hundred and forty.
Oh, that's what, okay.
Yeah, for Dix Point, um.
And I couldn't remember Howdy, when we talked about it before, did, I know we said that the base is probably shot on that road, is probably gone.
That one it is.
Um, but how much are we gonna get into? How, how far do we dig?
Right.
And how far do you, where do you draw the line?
Right. So looking through, um, in my memo, I said, looking through files from your previous meetings, um, that Chris had, there was, you know, the discussion of if you're gonna do the sc- uh, stream crossing replacement, um, and apply for a stream crossing grant, um, is that, are you going that far for the construction, is that what you want to do? How much of it do you want to get a, you know, bid on the building? Um, do you want the engineer involved in any design at the beginning, or? I did reach out to the engineer about the stream crossing, if he is willing to do the stream crossing grant at no charge and fill out the application, um, for the town for that grant at no charge, he said, um.
Uh, the road to me, it's pretty good to the stream crossing, you know, one or two.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and probably a little bit beyond, but I, I know the lower end of it's really pretty rough.
Right, once you get to the wooded area, the fast appeal is really good.
Yeah. So what I was thinking, it might be good to start it at the stream crossing.
Start it, yeah.
You know, and then, and then do the road from there down. And again, I don't know if that section from there to where you hit the woods, Howdy, if you really need to redo the base or not. But it might be, you know, it'd be a good starting point, you could include that in the project, is what I was thinking.
Right.
And you don't need to spend the money on the upper part of it at this point, if it goes over budget, maybe, maybe that might help.
I think with, uh, with so much going on, and last time there were a lot of questions with Chris, you know, for Chris, I should say, for, without having an engineer do it, I think it would be a lot easier this time on Jesse to have, have Greg come in and do, and maybe engineer it, but if we explain to him what we're looking for, um, what we're, you know, we're not looking to go crazy deep with it.
With carbines and everything.
Yeah, yeah, we just wanna, but also we don't wanna dig down, if you dig down by six feet, I mean, hard telling what's,
Right.
what that is for a base. Didn't you say you thought that might be a cordon code?
No, I don't know about that one.
Oh, okay, yep.
Yeah, my, my only issue with, um, the projects that we just completed was, um, apparently the engineer was not involved in the design, but the request was made that he monitor the construction of it.
Yeah.
So of course, he had opinions when he showed up that, well, this, we can't be able to this, this has to be, you know, ground up and done. So it made out okay, but it was like, geez, what's that gonna do to the budget?
Mm-hmm.
Cause we didn't, did, you know, did that as a part of it, so, um.
I think that road needs enough work to have the engineer do it anyway.
Yeah, I think you wanted to do the other part.
Yeah.
Might as well have him do the whole works.
Yeah, no, I think so, yeah.
I'm just afraid it's gonna scare us when we see the numbers that it's, I don't think one eighty-four is gonna cover the, that's what I'm afraid of, is.
Well, just tell them to keep it, you know, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I just think.
Basic as we can and still get a good job.
That, that one eighty-four includes a one forty? Yeah, okay.
You get down in the trees down there and you can see the base is all, everything, it looks like clay or something in the base, so it's, I just, I don't know. I bet it's gonna need a lot of work.
Well, maybe we should see if we'd get a grant for the stream crossing and start at the woods if it looks like it's gonna be high. Might be worth putting an option in the bid, you know, from this point or from this point.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know how much the grants usually are, or it's obviously project dependent somewhat?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, they can be, you know, up to a hundred and twenty-five, in that range, it depends on the project.
Hmm.
So we need a really big covert there.
Yeah, I mean, uh, it sounded like from the conversation that I had, that DMR would probably be looking for us to have an open bottom, um, hopeless amount.
Yeah.
Yep.
An open bottom, um, cause the concern they have is the fish passage.
How many fish go through there? I mean, where do they go? It doesn't go there.
According to the notes, it was flagged as their worst rating.
Yeah, I saw that.
I don't know.
We'll take it.
Yeah, yeah, I might as well approve it.
Yeah. Yeah, it would look good there too, with that, having an actual bridge, as I would call it, or whatever, that U-shaped.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
So yeah, get some numbers and go from there, right?
You'd reach out to the town engineer, I believe, would be the next step.
Yep.
Yep. And he's gotta get on the grant like yesterday.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's due on the sixteenth.
That insurance.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Uh, I make a motion, request the town manager to, uh, ask the town engineer to apply for the steam, the, uh, stream crossing grant for Dix Point Road.
Sorry.
I think that covers it.
What about to draw up, um, draw up the, the specs on the rest of the road?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, let's include that, and, and to include, uh, engineering for the remainder of the road.
And Howdy seconded?
Yep.
Yep. It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to, um, ask the town engineer to apply for the stream crossing grant and also to, um, have him put up the specs, draw up the specs for the, uh, Dix Point Road reconstruction. Is that close?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next is just regular road reconstruction.
Um, so, working on the budget, um, last year you allocated a hundred and forty, um, for Dix Point, um, so I just wanted to have a conversation on whether or not there's any roads you want me to look at budgeting for FY twenty-three. Um, I did talk to, um, public works foreman Troy, um, to get his input. He said, um, Seal Cove Road could be repaved, he felt that was pretty rough, especially with their following it. Um, it's fairly small section, um.
Hmm.
There's a pretty rough section of Clark Point, um, on the lower end. Um, if you wanted to consider, you know, maybe grinding and repaving a section of that. Um, but I didn't know if there was any, any of you had any thoughts or preferences, or if you even wanted to budget another one for FY twenty-three, or?
I think we've got a good thing going here now, if we just keep pe- picking away and picking away, then we're, you know, things are starting to, to look good. They did a good job on everything in, so far, so.
Yeah, yeah. The, the one thing I heard a couple of days ago, uh, someone on Clark Point Road was telling me the road does flood across some of the high tides.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And that might be something worth at least looking into to see if it's a solution.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't been on it since, uh, I was told that, so. It's one of those roads that's a grairder.
Just for that real low spot right there, yeah.
Too high.
Yeah, right there, right there, where it comes in.
You also might be able to get some funding for where it's in a flood.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Area, and I don't know what kind of covert that has, I'm trying to think, I almost can't think of what that has at that low spot right there.
Seems to always fairly be covered, I remember right.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, but I wanna say when I went down, down it with Chris, he's made some comment about the fact that the way it was currently was built so it is able to flood across the occasional, but that, that was expected.
Oh, okay.
Hmm.
I think we did some work on that road a few years back, and then worked on it.
Yeah, that one, that one was done, that was engineered too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so I'll look, I'll, but I'll check into it and see, yep.
Okay, mm. But it'd be nice if we didn't have water flooding across the road.
Um, so the other one, yeah, I haven't, I don't ever get down that end of Seal Cove Road, so I can't say, is it? That was a mess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's only, it's only a couple hundred yards long, right?
Yeah, it's not very long.
Maybe three hundred yards tops, yeah, so.
Yeah.
And that one you could easily just grind and, and put another coat.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sure the base looks good.
Yeah.
You know, if we're gonna do that, it would be really nice to get that hump out of it right at the park line. So, cause that is a real blind spot, and there are accidents that happen there quite often.
Mm-hmm.
I've almost been hit there a couple of times.
Is that on park property, the line?
I think it's right about on the line, it might be town, but it's, it's right about where the property line is there.
Yep.
Try to get some.
It's just before the gate.
Try to get some funding out of the fire.
They've actually cooperated on a couple of projects here.
That would be, I mean, if they're willing to work with us on that, that would be a good thing to do is have one driveway there at the top that I don't even have to think about, but shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
Any other roads anybody can think of, or just, I can't think of any that are.
No, I think we're in pretty good shape now.
My driveway gets pretty rough.
Yeah, I'd like some pavement.
No, Clark, I know Clark Point on the boatyard end of it, um, has some spots, if you get down in, you know, if you turn on where Mike Devim lives
Yeah.
on that end, and there's, those culverts are coming up through and stuff, but, um, obviously, when you did that, that would be a project.
Yeah.
That would be a, a big, big project.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yep.
The road really sucks a few past Howdy's area in the winter time, it's like an ice floe over the road right there.
Yeah, I know.
It's a state road.
I don't think anything can be done there.
State road.
State and then, yeah.
Ah, oh, well.
They did come ditch it though, didn't they? Or did they do some? I, I thought they, I saw them there at one point.
Yeah. Yeah, within the last year or two, they were doing some work there.
Yeah. I know, it's horrible right there, right on that hill.
Yeah, that's really dangerous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so, do you want to, you want any motion or just do some research and then come back, or?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, next we have the, uh, selectmen's meeting schedule.
Yeah, so your, um, proposed schedule, and you kind of get, um, just a couple of notes, um, February twenty-second is school vacation week, um, you did hold this past February, it's that same school vacation week, um. March fourteenth, twenty eighth, um, our special meetings, when we do the town, um, budget and meeting warrant on basically every Monday of March.
Mm-hmm.
Um, nineteenth of April, again, is a school vacation week, um, but we did hold it that week just past year. Um, town election, town meeting, I have tentatively put in the calendar for their usual second week in May, uh, with the election on Monday, May ninth, and town meeting Tuesday, May tenth. Um, I'm optimistic that we will hold twenty twenty-two here as usual, um.
Yeah.
So that's, um, I put that in tentatively, um, August fifteenth, um, I know the last couple of years, you have only had one meeting in August, um.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I mean, you guys used it as a break, I know, um, Chris also liked to take a vacation in August, it was his preference for the year, so that worked out, um, well for him, um. I don't have any such plans for August, so August of next year has five weeks, so it does create quite a span between the things that you skipped here, August second, um.
We ended up having a meeting this year anyway, it wasn't regular, yeah.
Yeah, I'm having a second one, um, so I don't have any issue holding two in August. If you guys feel that you wanna hold one, that's certainly understandable and we can make that change.
Yeah, I think we just, we did it before as to have a break because of the, you know, March, we had to cram a bunch in.
Um. Right.
And I think the first, I think we had to do April too, if I remember right, we had a, a bunch in a row, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, that's where we were just giving everybody a little break in the summer.
Yep. Um, and November seventh is moved to the second Monday in November due to Election Day, um, governor's election is, uh, November eighth, um, twenty twenty-two. I currently have only scheduled one meeting in November, last year you had one meeting in November on the ninth. This year, um, your schedule calls for a meeting today and a meeting next Monday, so right back to back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't really see need to have them back to back, you know, like, the way it is for right now, I have to do the agenda tomorrow for next week's meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have anything, um, for the agenda, so I've left it back to one meeting for next year, um, like last year. But if you wanna make any changes to that, you know?
I think probably only the two meetings in August, especially if there's gonna be five weeks if we don't, I think that makes sense in a, in one meeting in November, it's fine. I mean, things are pretty slow usually this time of year.
Yeah.
I mean.
What if you did, I'm just thinking of, it won't affect things for everybody else, but come July, um, would, would people like to have?
Sure it's gonna affect you, what are you talking about?
Yeah. Um, would people like to have one, one time in July? To, you know, an extra week in July instead of August, and then if that would give people a time off, or does that not work for you, Jesse? Just trying to think of a.
Take one off in July?
Yeah, just take one off in July, I'm just thinking, if it's such a span in August, that's all.
Yeah.
I think just one in July, um, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me, um.
No, it's a key.
July, then the fifth is a Tuesday.
Two, three, four.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Doesn't matter to me.
I'm fine with one in July, it's a four-week break, it's not quite so bad.
Yeah, if you took off.
We can try and hope.
Yeah, I mean, can we, can we take it off and worst case, we have to add it back?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we did this.
That's what happened this year, yeah.
If you took off, um, if you took off, I mean, one, two, three, if you took off the fifth, it's only a three week between June and.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
I was thinking around the fourth, it would be, that maybe it would be nice for everybody to.
Yeah.
Sounds good. It'd be fun of that. Good suggestion there.
Well, I just figured it would be sometime. All right.
Do you want a motion? Yeah. I was at the one 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 one. I'll make a motion to adopt the schedule for selectmen's twenty twenty-two meetings as amended, um, taking away July fifth meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the schedule for the selectmen's twenty twenty-two meetings as amended with removing the July fifth, um, meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next is the FY twenty-three budget preparation, we have, uh, third-party donations.
So again, in your packet is the, um, this year's grant application for the nonprofit organizations, um. It's the same as last year, um, just wanted to throw updating the dates and, um, years on it, um. There's a group summary in your memo of who received funding in FY twenty-two, um, who's received it in years past but not FY twenty-two. And I'll be, um, if you approve the application, I'll be sending a, um, tomorrow to those that received it in the past. Um, if any of you want to, want to send it in. Um, if any of you want to know if I want to send it in.
Yeah, that's the past two years, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And you are sending it to the people that didn't get funding last year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There's a question.
Okay.
Good to me, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal twenty three budget, no, just kidding. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty three grant application form for nonprofit organizations.
I snuck it in the wrong place, didn't I?
I'm, I'm ahead of you.
Looking at that, so. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the FY twenty three grant application form for nonprofit organizations. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have the budget calendar. You can see the FY twenty three budget. Pretty straightforward, I guess.
I'll try again. I'll make a mo- a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty three budget preparation schedule as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the fiscal year twenty three budget preparation schedule as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have the town manager's report.
So, major emphasis in the last two weeks has been election preparations and follow-up and planning board meetings and follow-up. I have attended the, uh, the Canadian National Park White House planning meeting, uh, arranged the vending machine removal at the war. Worked on the select board meeting schedule, attended the COVID nineteen task force meeting, uh, CEO and LPI work. Worked on a draft memorandum of understanding for the Lake of Towns. Uh, reviewed possible verse easement, FY twenty three budget work, I filed the monthly general assistance report, and I drafted the community building use policy. Um, office staff was busy with election prep, um, and election day, daily operations. Um, I did wanna take this moment to thank the town office staff, um, while I was out with COVID for ten days. Um, everything was smooth and efficient and did not have to worry about what was going on, um, I was in daily contact. So I appreciate all of their, um, hard work and help during that time. Um, Public Works has been busy backfilling Cape Road, hot top, um, truck one is back from Ellsworth. PDQ door, did a garage door inspection for the winter. Uh, s- tires were swapped on trucks three and nine, uh, maintenance was performed on the case. Cleaned up brush on Locus Point, Clark Point from Dodge Point from the storms. Assisted Justin with repairs to the float trailer. Put the lawn, uh, mowers away and prepped the town office grounds for winter, brought election supplies over. Helped Justin remove transient floats, put the headgear on truck one, and the sander on truck nine has been repaired. And patching on flat iron and steel cone and Cape Road. The harbor master, um, was busy pulling the sailboat off the point a couple of times, hydraulic, uh, replaced hydraulic hoses on the hoist. Uh, rebuilt float trailer, helped Public Works with shoulder work on Cape Road, hauled out the town boat and pressure washed it. And relaunched the town boat after the storms. Cleaned up trees in the roadway, tr- um, transient floats were hauled out and put away. Helped, um, Troy set up for Election Day. I helped, uh, Troy with the sander on truck nine and met, had a meeting with Marine Patrol. And over the next few weeks, I'm hoping to send out the third party donation apps, more budget work and follow-up on the stream crossing grant for Dix Point.
All right, thank you, Jesse.
Speaking of stream crossings, is there any progress on the Fishway or is that just all put off?
Yeah, that's been put off, um, until this spring due to the, uh, construction schedule.
That's, yeah, that's what I thought, I just.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
All right, uh, next meeting date.
Uh, I make a motion to set the date of our next meeting for Monday, November fifteenth at five o'clock right here in the town office.
Second.
I, I thought we were gonna skip that one.
No, that was for next year. He's gonna skip it, I think.
I'm okay with skipping it.
Yeah, do you have?
Okay.
You've done an agenda.
Cause you don't, you, right, you'd have to do a, an agenda tomorrow for Monday's meeting.
I do not have an agenda, yeah.
Okay.
So there's nothing on it?
There's nothing on it.
Okay, where's the next date then?
On, on my November, it's not.
I'm, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
It's gonna be December six.
December six.
December sixth?
December sixth.
Okay, I make a motion to hold our next meeting on, uh, Monday, December sixth at five o'clock at the town office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, December sixth at five PM at the town office. Is there any discussion?
Should've let you make that one.
I didn't want the date.
But all of, all those in favor? All right, now we have an executive session, um, land acquisition.
I make a motion to go into executive session as permitted by one MRSA four oh five dot six dot C for consideration of the acquisition for disposal of real property or rights therein, since premature disclosure of this information would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the town.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session under land acquisition as stated by Kevin. Uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we are out of executive session. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.